We have a website, brailinstitute.org.
Right.
And we will be glad to talk to anybody. And if someone does have a caregiver and that caregiver needs to be with that student, they can come with them to Braille Institute. You know, they can accompany them. We have several people that have caregivers.
What is the youngest ages that are there? I mean, I know we focus on senior issues, but...
Well, let me tell you, we start with age zero to over 100.
Wow!
Couple of little factoids for you. We do child development with the zero to before they go to kindergarten. This is a wonderful program. We have about 200 kids in it right now. So this is where, say, someone like Children's Hospital has some parents that have a blind child, they give us, you know, we have a partnership with them. They will say, "Here, you can call the Braille Institute." We have a counselor that will go into that home, work with the parents and with the baby and the siblings, till that child's ready to go to preschool. They go to a regular preschool. Because sighted kids, you know, they have no problems with anybody with disabilities, right? They're just kids.
Well, of course, they don't even notice.
They don't even notice.
Earlier in the program, we dropped in on cooking and vocal music classes. So we have some tape. Let's see what's in store as we continue our tour of classes offered by the Braille Institute.
This is our computer room, and Frances Daniels is the teacher of adaptive technology. And Frances has taught here for many, many years. She loves it, and the students love him.
This is a facility where we teach blind people how to use access technology. We have large print, which is ZoomText for Windows, and that shows information in different sizes of large print. We also are using JAWS, which stands for Job Access with Speech, and that's a Windows screen reader. This class is currently working on a project where they're typing documents, learning Microsoft Word, and various applications to, so that they can use it in their own personal life.
We're here in front of the creative arts room that we're going to visit, where Rhonda Velasquez is the teacher, and they teach everything from ceramics to printmaking to sculpture. The sky's the limit.
This class, we have tile pictures, and we use some adaptive techniques so the students can work on their own. Here, we've put down a raised glue line, so the students can feel the space that they're going to fill in. A lot of the students bring pictures or ask for pictures, and we draw them out for them, or they'll bring a picture from home. But this makes them independent, so they're able to work on their own with some small, little adaptive techniques. Mary's working on a picture of one of her guide dogs, and she loves to do tile pictures. And she always brings me difficult things, black on black, but she brings me pictures of the dog, and I tell her where to fill in, and she cuts all the tiles. Emery's cutting all his tiles into tiny little pieces. Helen's working with a volunteer, and she's working on some ceramic pieces. What are you making, Helen?
I'm making a, what would you call it? Like a hanging basket, put plants, like...
A wall. Oh, a wall?
A wall. Dried flowers. Dried weeds.
Yeah.
This is a sculpture by Seaward that was donated by Helen Lindhurst, and it is a sculpture of our founder, Bob Atkinson, who was a real cowboy who was blinded in 1912, and he became the founder of Braille Institute in 1919. The book that he is reading is Real Braille. This is the Vista Store. We have many items here for the blind and visually impaired: talking watches, talking clocks, talking calculators, talking scales, thermometers, anything that can help the blind person live an independent life. We also have large print address books, large print check displays, color readers, any kind of item you can think of that will help the blind or visually impaired person to live an independent life with the help of all of these different kinds of cooking items, et cetera.
Well, Carmen, this is great to know, because many people don't know where to go to get these assistive devices.
That's right.
That's fantastic.
They can come here, they can go online, the catalog is online, and you can just call us up and order it, and our clerks there will spend as much time as you need to describe anything.
Tell me about the library quickly.
The library for the blind and physically handicapped is part of the National Library Service, Library of Congress.
Yes.
What I want you to know about that is not just for people who are visually impaired, but anyone who's print impaired, anyone who has MS or MD, can't move their arms, is a paraplegic, maybe has very bad arthritis, they all can get the talking books.
Well, the talking books are the greatest thing on earth, especially when you're in the car. Dan, the mobility training you received, tell me a bit about that.
That was one of Braille's greatest gifts to me, was Carolyn Bryant, who was my mobility teacher. She came out to my house every Wednesday, and worked with me a full morning on getting me around all the downtown streets, how to cross with the traffic, how to get on every single bus, subway, and she just made my life free.
That's what we do at Braille Institute. We give people the tools and the programs so that they can do the things that they want to do. They can, the sky's the limit. They can still do everything they did before.
Well, it's centrally located, I mean, Vermont and Melrose. You have a whole feeder system, it's like having, nah, I won't call it minor leagues, but teams in other towns.
And resources, all the resources that are available for people, we let them know about those, too.
Okay, now, once again, I want to get the contact information back out there.
1-800-BRAIL, B-R-A-I-L-L-E, or brailinstitute.org. Come visit us online.
Exactly. It's, and thank you for bringing Val and Albert. They were really quite well behaved.
They're partners.
Yeah, they are. They enjoyed this a lot.
Well, Carmen, Dan, our time is up for today's edition of Aging in L.A. And thank you so much for being here, Carmen, and community relations coordinator at the Braille Institute, and Dan Donlin, who became a student at the institute when macular degeneration impaired his vision, and made the right choice to go seek help. And now, it's time for today's Senior Stat Shot. A rapidly increasing proportion of the aging population experiences eye problems that make simple daily tasks difficult or impossible even when wearing glasses or contact lenses. Severe eye problems are not just a matter of getting older. The risk of severe eye problems has been found to increase significantly with age, particularly in those over age 65. In the 18 to 44-years bracket, about 5.5% of Americans have had vision loss. For those 45 to 64-years-old, 12% suffer a decline in their vision. From 65 to 74-years of age, 13.5% have vision loss. And if you are over 75, 22% of seniors your age have vision loss. So, compared to Americans 18 to 44-years of age, seniors 65 to 74-years of age were nearly three times more likely to report vision loss. And those over 75-years of age were more than four times as likely as those 18 to 44-years of age to have had vision loss. And that's today's Senior Stat Shot. The Los Angeles Department of Aging produces this program with City View, Channel 35, so that seniors living in Los Angeles and surrounding communities are well-informed on the many issues that face them in everyday life. And also to let you know of the many services that the Department of Aging offers our senior citizens, and we'd like to hear from you with comments on the program, what you like, what you think can be improved, and your ideas for future programs. Please give us a call. The number's there on your screen, area code 213-252-4088. That's 213-252-4088. Call us with your comments and ideas. We look forward to hearing from you. I'm Paul Peterson for the Los Angeles Department of Aging, the people here at City View, Channel 35, and all of our guests on Aging in L.A. Thank you so much for watching. We'll see you next time.
All right, that'll be without objection. Any specials out of those two? All right, open the roll on the remaining item. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Next item?
Item 3 is Lincoln Heights Industrial Zone Business Improvement District, notes for public hearing. Council should close the public hearing, and ballot tabulation will be announced at tomorrow's council meeting.
All right, action to be taken on this item? Is there an action to be taken on this item today, then?
Today, council should close the public hearing.
Okay, do we have to vote on that?
No.
Okay. All right, so that'll be without objection. All right, next item?
Items 4 through 13, Department of Building and Safety, liens, notice for public hearing. The department reports that items 5, 7, and 12 may be received and filed in as much as the liens have been paid.
All right, let's open the roll on 5, 7, and 12. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
All right, and there are cards on number 4, so we'll come back to that. Next item?
That still leaves items 6 through 13.
All right, members, are there any specials on items 6 through 13? Mr. Parks?
We'd like to ask number 9, be continued for one week. The lien is being discussed with Building and Safety.
Okay, Mr. Parks has requested that number 9 be continued for one week. That'll be without objection. Members, any other specials on? No? All right, so then open the roll on the remaining items. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Next item?
Items 14 through 19 are items for which public hearings have been held.
All right, members, any? Mr. Zion?
19.
19 called special by Mr. Zion. Any other specials, members? All right, if not, then open the roll on the remaining items, please. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
All right.
And the ordinances will be held over for one week to April 26.
All right, next order of business?
Items 20 through 32 are items for which public hearings have been held. 10 votes are required for consideration. There is a request to continue item 27, two weeks to May 3.
All right, that one will be, that request for item 27 to be continued is without objection. Any other specials, members? All right, then let's open the roll on the remaining items. Mr. Parks? What? Cards. We do have cards on 22 and 23 and 24. All right, members, any other specials? If not, then open the roll on the remaining items. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
All right, we're just, next, next order of business?
Item 33 is a closed session item. There is a request to continue this matter one day to April 20.
All right, that request for continuance on number 33 will be without objection. All right. Why don't we? Oh, we have a, yeah, I'm sorry. Let's go to the supplemental agenda.
On the supplemental agenda, items 34 through 38 are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Members, any specials off of the supplemental agenda? All right, let's open the roll on 34 through 38, then. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
All right. That puts us, Mr. Cardinals?
29 forthwith, please.
Okay, 29, Mr. Cardinals requests that 29 go forthwith. All right, we will, that completes our agenda, I believe. Am I correct? Okay, great. We will now go to the public comment portion of the meeting, and we have a number of cards here, so I think what I'll do is I'll call people up. Four people at a time. The first four speakers will be Laura, or Lara, Lara Beers. Is Lara here? Okay, come on up. And after Lara will be Sean. Is Sean here? Okay, Sean, and then Eric Snodgrass? All right, and Phyllis Doherty. Is Phyllis here? Okay, Phyllis is here. Okay, great. All right, so our first speaker will be Lara Beers. Diana, you're gonna speak separately from her since I have your name on her card, but normally, one person per card. So first we'll go with Lara, and then Diana, and we'll go to, I didn't realize your name was on this card. Okay, Lara, and then Diana, and then Sean.
Good morning, thank you for having me. My name's Lara Beers. I'm representing Recycle Bank.
Okay, shh, can we have a little quiet over here on the, in the chamber so we can hear? Okay, go ahead.
Good morning, thank you. My name's Lara Beers. I represent Recycle Bank. We are incentive reward program for residential recycling that is currently partnered with the L.A. Sanitation Department and the city of Los Angeles. Our goal today is really to give you an update on the partnership, the materials that are being disseminated, and help raise awareness and work with your offices to get more of the residents and members in the pilot area registered in the Recycle Bank program. I'll turn it over to my colleague, Diana.
We don't normally share time, so are you done speaking?
No, ma'am.
Okay, why don't you finish your speaking?
Yes, ma'am.
And then she has her own time. Okay.
As you can see from the material that we've, we're passing out, we're currently in a pilot phase right now with the city of Los Angeles, again, working in partnership with the L.A. Sanitation Department. We are currently in the following neighborhoods: Marchmont Village, Los Feliz, Highland Park, Lincoln Heights, Westlake, Pico Union, Woodland Hills, North Ridge, North Hills, and Tarzana. We are planning citywide expansion in 2012. The core of the Recycle Bank program is very simple. The more your residents recycle, the more points they earn. They turn those points into rewards in the terms of savings at regional, national, and local businesses here in Los Angeles. There is a list of all of the local L.A. partnerships as well in the materials provided. What we are asking today from city council is simply to become aware of this program and to work with Diana, who is the outreach specialist for Los Angeles, specifically in the districts that we have a large presence in.
Thank you very much, and now for Diana Balastere.
Hello, my name is Diana Balastere, and I'm an outreach specialist for Recycle Bank. I'll just kind of pick up where Lara had left off with regards to a refresher on what Recycle Bank is. So the way it works is that people recycle at home, and they earn points for putting recyclables in the blue bin, and they redeem their points for rewards on recyclebank.com. And the benefits for Recycle Bank include savings on trash disposal, increased recycling revenue, increased revenue to local businesses, and Recycle Bank is free for residents, council districts, and local businesses. So, like Lara was mentioning, we would like to collaborate together on ways that we can participate in outreach initiatives, and we would like to meet and collaborate with field deputies, council staff, participate in activities, attend events, and take part in district communications. We believe that Recycle Bank is in perfect alignment with the Mayor's Green LA mission. As people recycle more, council districts can use that platform to motivate residents and promote their recycling success as being the top district at becoming the greenest big city in the nation.
Okay, thank you.
Keep them at the side ropes, so they know.
Thank you very much. Sean is our, thank you very much. Sean's our next speaker.
Thank you.
Yes, good morning, President, City Council, uh, want to wish everybody a happy Easter, and also, Sunday is my birthday, uh, I have a message for President Obama, he's gonna be here in our city on Wednesday, uh, I hope he can give us more revenue to run the city, and, uh, and I hope he enjoys his stay in, in Los Angeles. And a second thing, the streets still need to be repaired, and trees need to be trimmed, uh, I think we're gonna, I think we're gonna be okay in this year's budget, uh, thank you very much, Madam President, Madam Clerk.
Thank you very much. Mr. Snodgrass?
Good morning, council members, my name is Eric Snodgrass, I'm with IATSE Local 33, which is the, uh, Stagehands Local here in Los Angeles County. I'm speaking to you this morning in support of the, uh, Farmers Field and LA Convention Project, um, and I'm speaking because I believe in the positive long-term job creation prospects that this project will bring, and I'm speaking from experience. I moved here in ninety-nine, uh, one of my first jobs was actually at Staples Center doing the first regular season NHL hockey game there. In 2001, I did the first, uh, concert at the then-new Kodak Theater, um, and, uh, as you both know, now both of those are icons in Los Angeles and in the world. And those venues have allowed me to stay in LA, to do the jobs I want to do, to buy a house, live in LA, not in Pasadena, not in Glendale, not in Santa Monica, but in LA, and stay on the tax rolls. And in fact, I am working again at Staples tonight. So the long-term prospects that are at Staples, the long-term job prospects that are at the Kodak, are gonna happen at the, uh, Farmers Field. I believe that, I believe the, um, uh, Farmers and the new LA Convention Center will do exactly the same thing for those. Thank you, and good morning.
Phyllis Doherty?
Good morning, Phyllis Doherty of Animal Issues Movement. Um, I hope you saw my editorial yesterday in the Daily News regarding the closure, proposed closure of the, uh, Northeast Animal Shelter, Northeast Valley Animal Shelter, to the public. This is a shelter that is among those for which the public, uh, agreed to pay and is paying one hundred and fifty-four million dollars in bonds. The City Council and the Mayor floated those bonds, and made an implied agreement that these facilities would be open for the public and for the animals if we agreed to pay for them. We're doing our share, and I think the public, and especially the Valley, deserves to have the city meet its obligation. Animal control is not an option that can be just cast aside because it's inconvenient. It's a state law, and it's a public health and safety issue that must be maintained constantly and improved, especially in an area like the Northeast Valley where you have a very young demographic. These are the people that are most likely to get a pet, find their life situation change, and take it to a shelter. We need to educate them, and we need to provide for those animals. We need also to remember that shelters are mandated by state law to, for the intake of unwanted animals, strays. Um, they're not just adoption agencies and places to have photo ops and nice warm and fuzzy media conferences. In 2001, this agreement was made with the city, now it's time for the council and the Mayor to pay their part. We have to keep the Northeast Valley Shelter area because it supports all our shelters. We must stop resolving our poor management issues by merely ignoring the symptoms and making it go away from public view. Closing or giving the Northeast Valley Shelter to a, a non-profit that brought in fifty-one million dollars of its own money year before last, and we're going to give it for a dollar a year, is not going to resolve the issues of this city. We need to keep the shelter open for the city.
Thank you, Ms. Doherty. Uh, now let's go to Van Nuys for Donna Peirman. I'm sorry, she's here, okay.
Yeah, I came out here. Anyway, I want to say happy Passover to everyone, especially my friend Miriam, who's seen family and to President pro-term Jan Perry, and Eric Garcetti, I miss you. These days, we need to ask the City Council to be fiscally responsible. How can you ask the unions to concede when the leaders do not? Spending billions on CRA, only good benefit is temporary construction work, employment for the CRA who never had to concede. I say, let's make the CRA make concessions. Governor Brown sold out, and we'll make the people in the State of California, uh, go without, rather than go after the City Council's cash cow, their benefactor, whom they're beholden, their boss. The city employees have to concede to pay for the CRA, pay more for their medicines, co-pay, various projects on the table, uh, to stop full owes and layoffs. Yeah, I'd rather get rid of the CRA. DWT never made concessions, they were exempt, they made twenty percent more than other city employees. Where is the outrage about the DWP getting treated with kid gloves? Why are you only targeting lasers, fire, and police lately? They are conceding for other city entities. Meanwhile, the federal government is in debt, but will give Los Angeles billions for high-speed rail, our local buses are suffering, more money for less services. Why can't we have cable cars? Cable cars would be really nice, they make, uh, they're really good over there in San Francisco, and you wouldn't have to go down, down underneath the ground, and if there's a huge earthquake, we're gonna have a problem. In the meantime, we need to have more local buses, because a lot of people go around locally, in a lot of different little streets, like Satikoi, and, uh, we need to make more local buses and no, uh, high-speed rail. Let's get rid of the CRA. Thank you.
Thank you. Next four speakers will be Freddie Coronel, is Freddie here? Come on up. Francisco Medina, and Ms. LaTrenda White. Is Ms. White still here? Great, okay. And Murphy Johnson, Murphy Johnson. Okay, great. Mr. Coronel?
Hello, uh, my name is Freddie Coronel, and I'm a member of the LaRouche Political Action Committee. Uh, there have been a number of scientists throughout the world, including our very own science team for our political action committee, that have predicted a wave of earthquakes to strike all along the Pacific Rim, uh, you know, which included Japan, and of course, now includes California. And just yesterday, as a matter of fact, there was an earthquake that struck San Francisco, it was, I believe, a three-point-six. And now, uh, what, uh, we've, uh, put out is that in fact, an earthquake that would hit California would be much greater than what struck Japan. Now, there's ample amount of evidence that, uh, we've put together on our website, in fact, there was a recent conference in Venice, where they had a number of seismologists and geophysicists that had discussed this. Uh, two of our representatives were at that conference, and, uh, we've posted interviews with, uh, a geophysicist from Russia by the name of Paul Nietz, and also another, uh, Italian geophysicist, uh, named Biaggi. Now, in those interviews, they make two points very clear, one, that a wave of earthquakes will strike, and two, there's enough, uh, resources and, uh, instruments out there to allow us to forecast when these earthquakes will take place. Now, I say all this to make the point, that within cutting the budget, if an earthquake were to strike California, we would be rendered helpless and absolutely useless, as we saw by how we dealt with the mudslides and the wildfires that struck California some years back, or how the administration, previous administration had handled Hurricane Katrina. What we're saying is by going with Glass-Steagall, will allow the proper funding necessary for the scientific programs, so that we can tackle these major issues. Once again, there's a number of, uh, evidence that we posted on our website, I hope to meet with either you or your staff members to discuss this matter and other relevant matters even further. Thank you.
Mr. Medina?
Hi, my name is Francisco Medina, uh, I'd like to distribute this to the current, uh, present council members, if that can happen. Um, I'm here today because, uh, HR 1482 has been introduced into the House of Representatives, which is known as the Glass-Steagall, uh, Bill. Um, I would like for each and every congressman, or council member, to look at HR 1482 and endorse it, 1489, pardon me. Um, it's been submitted by Congresswoman Marcy Cappura of Ohio. What it does is it separates investment banking from commercial banking, it goes back to this nineteen thirty-three precedent set by Franklin Delano Roosevelt, where we don't allow for speculation with other people's money, and this is the heart of what created this whole financial crisis that we are in. Um, it is my opinion that through budget cuts, we will never get out of this crisis, that we have to create more wealth, which is investing in the physical economy, transportation systems, power systems, the electricity grid, all these systems, if we invest it in, can produce millions and millions of jobs, not folding clothes up the gap, but jobs that will provide skills for the millions of people that are unemployed today. So, again, 1489, the House Resolution Bill, if I can have somebody distribute this, thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. LaTrenda White.
Good morning, my name's Ms. White, um, I'm here from Atlanta, Georgia, I know I say that every week. Um, today, I want to give thanks to God for being alive, I know everyone attends church somewhere, um, I want to discuss a few names and a place. Nat King Cole, Cab Calloway, Lena Horne, Mahalia Jackson, Aretha Franklin, Ray Charles. These people have all performed, uh, with a choir from St. Paul Baptist Church, which is located one hundred north, one hundred west, Forty-Ninth Street, and South Main. This church is over a hundred and four years old, it's in danger of being torn down, it's a rich part of Los Angeles city history. The pastor is Joel Anthony Ward. I'm here today on behalf of the church to try to save this monument, historical building, so that it can continue to be a part of Los Angeles city history. I'm here today so that people will know about it, so that we can do something to try to bring a change, so that it won't be lost. Thank you, and have a good day.
Thank you, uh, what's your name, sir?
Johnson.
Okay, you're Murphy Johnson, okay, great.
Yes ma'am, good morning. Hi, my name is Murphy Johnson, I'm in IBW, Journeyman, Wireman, Local 11, Electricians Union. I'm here today in support of the Farmers Field NFL Stadium Project, which would be good for me, I've been out of work for a while, and, uh, I need this project, and construction workers like me need this project. I had the opportunity to, uh, look at the plans of how it would look, and I took note of the, uh, the convention, the renovation to the convention center, which would create jobs for, uh, people beyond the scope of construction. And not only that, uh, a, a big point of this is, I'm from the City of Los Angeles, and I would love to see something like this, a stadium, you know? I want to thank you guys for your help in, uh, passing the LA Live Project, which I did work on, I worked on the parking structure, and the, uh, Ritz Hilton, I'm, I'm, excuse you, uh, the Ritz Carlton, MJ Marriott Hotel, and every time my kids drive by that, they tell people that their dad worked on that. So, uh, I want to bring pride to our city with this stadium, and, uh, thank you for any efforts that you guys put towards that.
Thank you very much. Martin Vincent, Martin Vincent, come on up, Sam Peloton, or Peloton, and Richard Robinson.
Hello, good morning, my name's Martin Vincent, I'm a union plumber at a Local 78. I'm here to support with the football stadium, I really hope this project goes through, will put me back to work, I've been out of work for about a year now, and, uh, catch up on my bills, walk with dignity again. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Sam Villatine, good morning, City Council, I'm in support of the NFL Football Stadium, um, I'm out, I've been unemployed for like a year and a half, I mean, I, hopefully you guys get this stadium going, because, uh, I'm out with bills, with rent and all that stuff, so, hopefully we get this stadium up, appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Robinson?
Madam President pro-term, Richard Robinson. Madam President pro-term, members, three items, number one. In nineteen oh-six, the Cascadia Subduction Zone slipped from Alaska to San Diego, the nineteen oh-six earthquake was huge. Thank God the population wasn't what it is today, tens of thousands would have done it. In nineteen sixty-four, the largest earthquake recorded in North America, in Alaska, nine points, I believe, sealed. Well, I'm not a seismologist, but I doubt very seriously that the motion picture 2012 was a representation of truth. Second item, Mark Ridley-Tonis, when he was City Council, showed me a very slick, highly polished brochure of USC's Coliseum. Fifty-million-dollar renovation, bring the Raiders down from, back to the home. We've been talking about that for years around here, folks. Al Davis gets five-hundred-million dollars for, Mr. Burns thought it extravagant, but it's time we bring the Raiders back home, for what, a renovated Coliseum? Put Marcus Allen where he belongs and own his box? The third item, some idiot published in the Times, I don't know who would put a picture of President Obama at the head of a, a family of apes, I don't know, but thank you, ma'am.
Thank you very much, Mr. Robinson, that marks the end of our public comment period. So, Madam Clerk, our first item on the agenda, called special?
Item number one, there's requests to hold that item for, until next week.
Alright, then that'll be without objection. Is there, number one?
Sorry, um, the items referred, uh, back to the Public Safety Committee.
Alright, item number one will be referred back to Public Safety Committee without objection. Next item?
Uh, item number four, called special for cards.
Alright, we have a card on item four from Donna Peirman. Donna Peirman on item number four? You don't want to speak? Okay, Ms. Peirman says she doesn't want to speak on item number four, so we will open the roll on item number four, please. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Thank you very much. Next item?
Item twenty-two, called special for cards.
Alright, we have a card from Donna Peirman on item number twenty-two.
Sean Murphy, sorry, Sean Murphy was on four, but, uh, well, sorry. Okay, uh, anyway, I want to speak, oh, I can't find my notes. Oh yeah, here, what I, uh, what is, I want to know who's getting this exact, tax-exempt, uh, multifamily, uh, revenue bond. Thirteen-point-five million is going to City Council's favorite friend, the developer. Why is it tax-exempt? Won't that hurt the city hurting for revenue? Why can't we know how it's being paid back? Is the CRA involved in closed doors, so it doesn't look like CRA is involved? What happens if they default? Do we know for a fact we won't pay? If it's private, wouldn't that show that we don't need the CRA? But still, why do non-comp, uh, uh, companies get tax exemption and the rest of us would have to pay?
have to pay through the nose? I don't trust this subject, uh, this project. I don't think anything's gonna, could come of it. I believed in small housing projects that would have little, small buildings that would look more housing-friendly, and it looks more like a place that you can live in, not these huge bulk, uh, bulk, uh, bulking multifamily, uh, complexes that look like prisons. I say we should vote no on it, and I don't trust it, and I believe the CRA is behind this. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Labange, do you want to make, uh?
I want to move this forward. I think this is a good project. We need housing. And, uh, Mr. Miller, there's anything to repeat what these public speakers said. This is all done through a process. That's why we have it on the public agenda. We partner to build housing in the city, and where it's appropriate, we build housing.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. All right, let's open the roll on this item. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Next item.
Item 23, call special for cards.
Uh, Ms. Peirman on item number 23, please.
Hi. Okay, maybe he thinks that this housing is good, but I believe, still believe that we can still do small amount of housing. There were, it looks like people are living in a house, and it doesn't look like people are living in prisons. This is even a larger amount, 21,750 million on Hollywood. That's another amount to land. Is it anything like the other Hollywood fiasco? I was gonna ask Mr. Garcetti, is, uh, is having so much trouble with it? Why do we run more projects along Hollywood? If it doesn't work, Mr. Garcetti, you might have to play piano for a living, and the others will have to find other jobs if these people default, and somehow, they can't find the money to pay it. If it smells like CRA, it's CRA. City Council loves a CRA, and they love huge developers, and I like to see a picture of all this particular housing and why it costs 21,750,000. I still don't like the fact that it's tax-exempt. I still, still somehow feeling that somehow we're gonna pay for it in the end, because we won't have enough money for all our city services while they, uh, lend 21, uh, million 750,000 away. I don't like it at all. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Peirman. Uh, Mr. Labange.
Another housing project has been vetted through our Housing Department, vetted through the City Attorney's Office, vetted through committee, and I ask we move forward.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. Let's open the roll on this item, please. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
All right, next item.
Item 24, call special for cards.
All right, Donna Peirman on item number 20. Oh, you have one minute left, Ms. Peirman, for today.
That's all right, that's all I have time for, anyway. I know this is no-ho, so it's 900.6 million tax-exempt bonds. I still say we can't keep on affording, giving all these monies, and in the meantime, all the city employees have to concede, have to give up. This is not right, and they have to, uh, stop layoffs and furloughs. And in the meantime, the city council seems to be giving away huge amounts of money away to all these developers and all these huge expensive people. They must have, uh, a lot of money to be able to repay this, and I like to know exactly, I like to be able to see the fact, how they're gonna be repaying this back. And so, uh, I say no on all these projects, and let's keep the city employees and give them everything they deserve. No more concessions, except DWP. No more concessions.
Thank you very much. All right, let's, Mr. Labange.
Again, this is housing that's necessary, a no-ho, and appreciate it that we vote for this, approved and vetted, approved by the City Attorney.
Thank you very much, Mr. Labange. Uh, let's open the roll on this item, close the roll, and then tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
All right, next item. Mr. Wesson.
Reconsider item 15.
Uh, Mr. Wesson has a motion to reconsider item 15. Uh, I believe I have a second from Mr. Zine on that. All right, let's, uh, motion is before, so reconsider item 15. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
All right, item 15 is before us right now, Mr. Wesson.
I'd like to, uh, continue it for 30 days.
All right, Mr. Wesson wants to continue item 15 for 30 days, and that'll be without objection. Uh, do we have a date on that, Madam Clerk?
May 20th.
All right, that item will be continued to May the 20th. Item 15 will be continued to May the, May the 20th. All right, Madam Clerk, next item.
Uh, item 19, call special by Mr. Zine.
Mr. Smith, and, uh, I believe he wanted us to hold this one on the desk for a bit?
So, any question? Wrong guy. The guy that can answer the questions, yeah, okay, all right, excuse me. There are cops here, but people that can answer the question that may come about are not here. I would just point out, this is only a debate about the extension of the existing contract, pending an RFP coming back for a new system or no system at all. This is not about the photo red light. So, if anyone wants to discuss the contract extension, we could do that, but there's no one here from the department that can answer any questions about the contract extension, if anyone needs that.
Okay, um, would you like to continue the matter?
Well, I, I didn't call it special, so I, you know, I would just assume.
Hold on, Zine.
I would just assume if there's people that have questions about whether or not to extend the existing contract pending the return of the RFP, then we need to wait for the police department to come here. We need to wait.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, thank you, Mr. Smith. Mr. Zine?
Well, I, I submitted some questions to the police department regarding this, uh, and we don't have the answer, so I'd like to continue it if we could till Friday, or till next Tuesday. We don't, okay, next Tuesday?
Friday, we, yes, because we're.
Continue till Tuesday. Continue till Tuesday. Thank you.
Does anyone, uh, have an objection to that? Mr. Smith?
Because the contract is expiring this week, I think.
No, the 30th.
The 30th, okay, so we have a very short timeframe.
I have a funeral to attend tomorrow.
Okay, well.
If you wanted to, we could have a quick discussion. I could answer questions about the contract extension issue. And again, to others, if you want to talk about photo red light, this is not the discussion.
Mr. Cardenas?
Madam President, if somebody, uh, Councilmember Smith is correct, if somebody has questions about the contract extension, it's appropriate that we continue discussion. Let's see how far we can get today, Mr. Smith, uh, on questions that are specifically appropriate for today's agenda, absolutely.
Uh, Mr. Zine is in the queue again, Mr. Zine? Okay, press your buttons, because there's more than one person. Mr. Zine?
Well, I was gonna say, it's one thing to ask questions about the extension, but I think most of our questions are about the program, and.
And that's not up for the discussion.
Then, that's what I would like to continue when we have the answers from a.
It won't even be then, either, though. We are not talking about photo red light. We are talking about the extension of the existing contract until they get the RFP completed and back. The board is reviewing the RFP now for a new or no system in the future. So, today is only to extend the existing company until that RFP is done.
But if I may, that, that would, that would enter into my decision whether I wanted to extend it, is all these questions about the actual program, and, for me.
You can't change it.
Don't be giving that one.
You, you cannot change existing program. It's not about the program.
Why don't I make a suggestion?
If we don't extend the contract, a photo red light stops today.
So, why don't we, excuse me, why don't we continue? I'm gonna call on Mr. Rosendahl next, and then I'm going to make a suggestion that we extended, uh, continue the discussion for one day and get, get the appropriate person over here, uh, tomorrow for sure, on time. And, uh, Mr. Rosendahl, and then let me call on you, Mr. Zine.
If we extend it for a day, I can send my questions for tomorrow.
I know, I know. All right, Mr. Zine?
Uh, the reason that I will not be here tomorrow, I have a funeral to attend at 10:00 in the morning. Depends how long the council meeting goes, but I do have a funeral to attend at 10:00 AM. That's why I asked that we continue till next Tuesday, which still gives us sufficient time to resolve the issues and the questions. We did submit questions to the police department. We don't have answers to those regarding the current contract. So, with the pleasure, we could do it till Tuesday.
Hold on a second.
Questions were answered in committee. You were there, you voted on it, you had your questions. The city attorney says that is not up for debate. If you want to make a speech, it's one thing, but what is before us is just to extend or not extend the contract.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. The, what the questions that were submitted to the police department deal with the current contract and the issues dealing with the current contract.
Mr. Zine, I have a suggestion, um, because you have a conflict. There's probably one of your colleagues here who could carry your questions for you, uh, and ask them on your behalf, and document the record that they are asking on your behalf tomorrow, so that we can, uh, get this.
Well, I don't, I don't know why we can't do it till Tuesday. It still gives us sufficient time.
Well, we could take a vote on it.
Before the contract expires.
All right, I need somebody to make them. Mr. Smith?
Okay, good.
All right, Mr. Smith, all right, thank you. All right, we'll continue this to Tuesday of next week, and that date, Madam Clerk, would be?
April 26th.
All right, this item will be continued to Tuesday, April the 26th. Thank you very much. Uh, what is our next matter of business, order of business?
The council has motions for posting a referral.
Motions are posted and referred.
There are excuses on the desk. Council President Garcia requests to be excused on April 26th for personal business, and that meets council policy.
All right, that is without objection.
Councilmember Labange requests to be excused on June 15th and 17th for city business, and that meets council policy.
Without objection.
That closes the desk.
All right, members, are there any announcements? Any announcements? All right, Mr. Cardenas?
Yes. Thank you very much, uh, ladies and gentlemen. Uh, this morning, we had a little press conference outside on the steps of City Hall announcing once again. Everybody is familiar with Jerry's Kids. Everybody's familiar with the Muscular Dystrophy Association, and they have a telethon every year, and it's wonderful, and, and it does great things. However, for the last six years, our City of Los Angeles firefighters have been doing a fill-the-boot campaign, and I just want everybody to look out. Uh, tomorrow, Wednesday the 20th of April, Thursday the 21st, and Friday the 22nd, keep your eye out for firefighters standing on the corners of our City of Los Angeles. There will be across 22 intersections throughout the City of Los Angeles collecting cash and checks. I'm sorry, no, no, uh, credit cards, but you can get ahold of the Muscular Dystrophy Association directly, and you can use your credit card, or wait for the telethon. But our firefighters raised over $150,000 last year from your generous contributions, and the contributions go toward research to find a cure for muscular dystrophy, uh, disabilities. In addition to that, there's also a camp that children can go to that is specifically tailored to them, so they can enjoy themselves, and they can experience a camp-like setting that otherwise, without this facility, they will never be able to experience. And again, we've been doing this in the City of Los Angeles for the last six years. However, firefighters throughout the United States have been doing this since 1954, out of the kindness of their heart, collecting generous donations from Ca- Californians and people throughout the United States. They've been doing this since 1954. This is an effort on behalf of the firefighters, and, uh, once again, there's at least 6,000 individuals who are served by the Muscular Dystrophy Association. Let's please open our wallets and give when you see these firefighters in our intersections over the next three days. Tomorrow, Wednesday the 20th of April, Thursday the 21st, and Friday the 22nd. Again, please give generously to the Muscular Dystrophy Association. I want to thank you in advance for all of your generous support. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cardenas. Uh, any other announcements from members? Any other, Mr. Labange?
I've got an announcement right before adjourning motions.
This is the time to do that.
Okay, good. I just wanted to recognize that 10 years ago, on the 17th, on Sunday, John Farrell passed. Uh, so 10 years since John, uh, left this earth, and he's served for over 35 years. He was born in Los Angeles in Cudahy, and, uh, went to Bell High School. I'm sure up at heaven, he's a little upset with the city of Bell. But he was an All-Star at Bell and got a full scholarship to USC, and after USC, he was selected, uh, on the Police Commission for many years. And then, when Harold Henry died, he was the last member of council to be ever appointed to this body, uh, 1966, where he served for 35 years, many of those years as president. So, I wanted to recognize the 10th anniversary of the passing of late, great John Farrell.
Thank you very much, Mr. Labange. Any other, um, announcements, members? All right, if not, let's please rise, uh, for adjourning motions. Uh, why don't we start on this side? Mr. Zine, do you have an adjourning motion?
Yes, I do. Thank you, Madam President. This is for Doreen Parnas. Passed away on, uh, March 14th, born November 15th, 1954. Married to her first love, Alan, for 14 years. They divorced in the early 90s, immediately falling in divorce. She met a man named Michael Hall, whom she was with ever since, possibly 20 years. It was love at first sight. Michael be at her services. Very sad loss for the family. Her career was always in law, mostly injury defense law. Legal secretary for Fenton Williams for many years. When Roberta Kramer, then Roberta Kramer, for about 10 years, extremely passionate about her children and grandchildren. Her children are David, youngest son, Nicole, middle daughter, and Danielle, the oldest. Two grandchildren, Nicole, Nicholas 10, and Joey 6. Doreen, her grandchildren, spent most of her time with them. Number one hobby was cooking.